I will go ahead and just kick off the meeting. So once again, this is the first District Two Town Hall, and we have a great agenda for you today. We look forward to hearing your questions. First, I wanted to just share with everybody, since I haven't seen you since the election, one of my big goals was to connect people to City Hall. And that was often a theme that I heard, is that people weren't aware of what was going on. They didn't feel connected. They didn't sort of feel like they were involved in their city. So I hope to improve that and connect people. First, I want to introduce Darla Dyson, who is the new District Two liaison. So give a wave, Darla.
Hello, everybody.
And I also wanted to let you know that there are several ways to stay in touch with us. So on the District Two website, you can submit comments. You can also submit requests. We also have the sign up for our newsletter, our monthly newsletter, and critical announcements from the city. We also send those out. So please, everybody on the webinar, please sign up for our newsletter. We also have social media, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, so we look forward to seeing you there. The other thing that you could do is download the Citizen Service app in the App Store. And that is a great way to very quickly take a picture of something, whether it's a mattress in the parkway, broken sidewalk, a tree that needs to be trimmed, or a tree that's dying. You could take a picture of it pretty quickly, send it in, and usually you get a response within about 24 hours or so from the correct city department that can provide some information or some assistance. You can also email Darla and I, and those emails are on the website. So let's go to the meeting logistics. Tonight, we have three speakers. And the first will be the Police Department Chief, John Perez. And he needs to leave around 5:45, so he will go first and then answer questions right after he speaks and give us an update on crime as well as community policing. Next up, we will have the City Manager, who will give us an update on COVID, the budget, which we've heard many concerns about, and then upcoming council items that may be on the agenda. We also have a surprise guest who wasn't listed on our postcard, and that's Chief Fire, New Fire Chief Augustine, who will talk about what's happening at Jefferson Elementary School, where the fire department has been using it for some operations. And then last, we will have Department of Transportation Director Laura Canejo, who is joined by Rich DeLuio. They will talk about some of the key transportation projects in District Two and answer some of your questions. So after each speaker, we will have about five or six minutes of Q and A. And then we will have Q and A at the end as well. The way to ask a question is to submit it in the Q and A box. If you look at the top of the Zoom, there's a Q and A box. And you can submit your question. It will come to us. And you can submit it with your name, or you can submit it anonymously. And Darla will be going through the questions and then asking the questions of each of the speakers as we go through them in the Q and A box. Some of you, thank you very much, said questions earlier. We have asked the speakers to try to incorporate some of the answers into their talk. We also would like to, in terms of timing, there is a webinar at 6 o'clock that Assembly Member Holden is doing about the COVID vaccine, which we understand that many people would like to join as well. So we will try to get through all the speakers and a few questions by 6 o'clock. Anyone who would like to join Assembly Member Holden's Zoom call, then they can go ahead and do that, and we will stay on for about 15 minutes or so after that and ask more general questions. So with that, I will turn it over to Crime and Safety Updates from our Chief, John Perez.
Thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I think we begin tonight just, you know, our support and just a difficult time people are having through the COVID period with the economy and loss of life, as well as the recent shootings that we've had, where people have been injured as well as a loss of life. We always take a moment to recognize that all that we do is for them. And so with that in mind, I think I should begin with the most serious items for the city, and that is the violence has occurred. This year in 2021, we started off with a couple of homicides in January. We did have some shootings, the worst of which, since November, we've seen three murders and a few people shot around the Villa Park area. I could report that we are making progress on these investigations. I don't want to talk too much about them, but they're progressing in the way they should. It's never quick enough. It's never fast enough. But I check in daily with our investigators in our Criminal Investigations Division. So we are progressing again, and I hope to share better information soon. The 10-year-old is recovering. He just turned 11. And it's been difficult times for that family, and we support them as well. I have walked the neighborhoods, and I've talked to neighbors, property owners, and listened to their stories and the things happening. It's a very difficult place to be, because I do get on Zooms every week with different groups who want us to stop a lot of our policing and the type of strategies we have. At the same time, it's difficult to balance the enforcement that's needed. So I oftentimes am guided by the City Managers and his advice and his direction. And when it comes to policing operations, he expects me to provide the strategies that work well for our community overall. And so in doing that, we are using science. We are going to where the calls for service are sending us. We are going to where the gangs are most active. We are going to where the shootings are occurring. And with that, we have seized 300 guns last year. And this year, we have 60 guns that we've seized, of which over 20% are ghost guns. And every night I go to sleep, I worry about our officers having to do these traffic stops and the amount of cooperation they're gaining, so we don't have another officer-involved shooting. I know how damaging it would be to have another, yet every night we're taking a gun off somebody's waistband or their jacket pockets or pants pockets, and we're not having a shooting. So I really appreciate the amount of work that they're doing, the type of cooperation, de-escalation that's happening. But it only takes one to go sideways, and there'll be a demand to remove me, you know, people in my command staff. I get that kind of anger that happens. So are we better off not doing that type of policing, or is there a balance? So we are given training. We're debriefing. We're talking. We're working with the community and trying to find a balance to this. So I do hold myself responsible for that place. When it comes to community policing, council member, we are focused on ensuring that we're doing engagement as often as we can. Oftentimes, we hear the police department is not doing enough. People don't know the officers' names. As I talk to neighbors and knock on doors and speak to people, they surely know their officer's names. They know the people are coming by. I think there's more we could do, a lot more. We are developing a community culture class for our department that we could ensure we, every month, we have a different part of our community that we're understanding better about our history. That should be starting up in a few months as we do our research. But it is requiring us every day to make sure we're engaging our community. We have over 60 officers in position over the last three years that we've hired from the community and around the area. So we are doing very well. We're doing better than we have been in the past in hiring not just women, but people of color. We're better than the average around the state and around the country. So I like what we're doing. The police work, though, has to get done. That's really what you want. We want the community engagement. We want to be able to look at some of these issues and make sure that we're talking to people. So the officers are out there. We are remodeling our neighborhood policing model to ensure that we have some apps for the officers, that they know where to go and what time to go. So as I get complaints about issues or concerns, we try to get those to our divisional commander and patrol through our chute, and we work on trying to maneuver the officers to be where they need to be before the problems come up. It's not always that simple. Resources aren't always that easy. But since we have redirected our gang work by eliminating the gang unit and creating a different type of units, we are getting at a lot of these issues and making a lot of the rest. Please understand, the arrests are already a fail point for us. You know, we work off the platform of prevention, intervention, and then enforcement. When the prevention fails us through the schools, through families, community services, our own intervention and prevention, it leaves us with the second step in intervention. And once that fails us, it leaves us with enforcement. And the enforcements are the traffic stops. There are the field investigations, the search warrants. And whenever we start making arrests regarding this violence, we have the trauma that comes back, not only on the families that have been involved, but also the families that have lost somebody through incarceration. And these become issues for us to deal with as well. So we're doing our best to use prevention through the Flint Ridge Center, other outreach mechanisms, to try to prevent the future of gang violence and just people carrying guns. If I could ask the community to do something, and that is when you report crimes to us, it's very specific that we begin to learn how to report crimes to our dispatch center. Whether you call the 744-4241 number or 911, what we would like to see is that when you call, you're already thinking about what you're going to report. What we want to hear is exactly what you're seeing. Sometimes our dispatchers are short with people, and they cut people off. And we try to explain to residents, it's not that they're mean, because they're some of the nicest, hardest-working people. Every minute or two, they get another phone call, or 1,000 phone calls reported to the dispatch center. And so it's one of those things where you look at how many phone calls they receive every year. It's almost 300,000. So the dispatchers might be four or five on shift. And what they want to know is what you're seeing. What are you looking at? Where are you calling from? Description of people involved and what they are doing. So if you're telling us that you're on your favorite couch watching TV, you might get a cutoff from a dispatcher right there. Don't take it negative. They just want to get to what they can do to help you. And to help you understand this facet, as we have one of the fastest call times from the time a dispatcher picks up a phone to an officer responding, is one of the quickest response times in the nation in a recent report that we have done. So we're here to assist on those things. But I could probably answer questions better, council member, or I could get really to the heart of it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And so we do have a question in the Q and A box, but we did get one by email that asked about community policing. And, you know, we used to have coffees and be able to interact with the police officers so we could know them more. But what can we do during COVID to try to bring a little bit of that back, some of the sort of community policing part of it?
Absolutely. If neighbors do have some request for us to stop by and have a discussion on crime or the community, we could do that with a Community Relations Section. We could still stop by using our safety precautions, masking up, having distance, but we could answer some of these questions. We did develop during the pandemic something called Eye Prevention, and that's a way for us to stay connected to business districts and a larger grouping of people. And so, you know, we want to reach out to our Community Relations Section. On our website, you'll be able to make contact almost instantly and have a response back to arrange some type of community event with residents or, in fact, with business districts, who could answer some of these questions and really try to understand the dates and times of when we could best have visible policing. If we could match up the times and the days of when this is happening with the visible part of what we're doing, we will see some of this stuff go away that really annoys us in our community. However, for that to occur, we need to have better connection points. And Eye Prevention will help us with that. And we are revamping our entire Community Relations platform to make sure we could connect with the city.
Okay. Go ahead, Darla, with the Q and A.
Okay. First question is, compared to other districts, how is the crime rate in District Two?
District Two crime rate's about average. What we're looking at a lot is, we have two types of situations that we deal with. One is the actual crime rate. The crime rate is at historical lows for this city. However, what we're dealing with overall across the nation is a 35% increase, which triples any previous mark in our history. So we can't continue this increase. But the rates in District Two are the lowest that we've seen in decades. It touches on some of the gang activity, but not entirely all centered in District Two. The other part of what we deal with, besides the crime, is the calls for service. We have clumps of calls for service in some areas. Sometimes it's about District Block Five and some of the issues around there with groups and people hanging out. So we have to separate the crime with the calls for service. So what we created last year was the Neighborhood Services Section. As we identify clumps of calls, the bicycle teams and the parks specialists go out and try to investigate that to cut back so we can eliminate those. We don't have a lot of those problems in District Two. We do have sporadic issues with neighbor issues and complaints, and some of those calls for service that we deal with on a regular basis around the city. But for the most part, it is a bit lower than the average around the city for District Two.
Great. Next question. Chief Perez mentioned an app that the police have begun to use. Is that an app that the community can use to input issues we're seeing in lieu of calling dispatch?
No. The dispatch center is the best place for us to report those crimes and the responsibility. The app for us is a quick access point to look at different problems around the city. We could look at who's wanted and different places for us to do that. But it's not an input app. We input different links that they can go to. We do like people to call us for those calls for service. It's a very interesting trend over the last two, three years, especially with COVID, that people will actually email me calls for service. And if I miss that email, I like to say I'm on my emails a lot, but I may miss that call for service on an email, which is not the way to do it. So we do want people to call. We do want people to report these type of activities that they think it needs a police response. It is the easiest way for us to have an exchange with people to make sure it's real. There are times we have to call. We have to cancel calls for service because the information doesn't seem real, doesn't seem legit. And we have to be very careful on how we police for procedural justice to be real. We just can't respond to everybody's concerns all the time, which might not be a righteous call for police services. So that's why we need that two-way interaction.
Next question is, can you repeat the number for the non-emergency, non-911 calls?
Absolutely. 626-744-4241. And I highly suggest that people do input it into their phones. It's something you should do. If you go on vacation somewhere, you should always have the local police department. You keep it in your vacation phone. You could delete it when you leave, but you should always have the number. If you use an asterisk, they'll be the first ones that show up on your phone contacts. But to have the PPD in your phone rolodex is always good off the cell phone.
Okay. Next question is, are you still looking for citizens to serve on a task force?
So we have a chief's advisory that was created two years ago, and we're able to bring in some community members. We do have a police commission being formed. I believe the applications, boss, have already been accepted. They're in the process of being accepted?
Monday is the deadline to apply.
So that's a quick application process. And so you know, there's probably, there's 18,000 police departments, probably 12,000 municipal police departments, 354 here in the state of California. And of all those, only 200 really have an oversight process for their police department. So that's not very many. Very few are going to have as many as Pasadena has with my chief's advisory, the Public Safety Committee. We're going to have the police commission, and we'll have an internal auditor as well. So we do have a lot of different mechanisms. I do worry about the future and how they're going to kind of, you know, run into each other in places. But we do have a good system. We support it here in the police department. We look forward to it being done. But they have a little bit of time. And if people are more interested, as we get out of COVID, we will reopen our Citizens Police Academy. We've had 2,000 graduates since its inception, almost 30 years ago. So we have a lot of people applying. We have, of course, Community Police Academy in Spanish as well, and that's working out very well. So we're hoping to return back to it. We have 140 active volunteers, which is some of the biggest, a bigger program you'll catch anywhere in the country. So we're doing really well with that. So there's different access points for people to be closer to the police department. Darla?
Okay. We have just two more. This is from Jaime. Hello, Chief. Thanks for your leadership. And this kind of speaks to what you were just talking about. He asks, if I wanted to get involved on a volunteer basis or do a ride-along, how would I do this?
You could go ahead and email me, JE Perez at thecityofpasadena.net. JE Perez at cityofpasadena.net. And so you can send me an email to see if we could link him in. During COVID, it is a little bit difficult. We are holding off on those. But it's important for people to connect with their police departments by going out there and seeing firsthand what it's like for the police officers out there. They do a phenomenal job on outreach and enforcement, and it's good to have other people in our community be part of that.
Okay. And last question from Greg. When should you call 911 versus the 4241 number?
Great. Great question. And oftentimes, I mean, we get calls about people on 911 asking how to get to their favorite places in Pasadena, which is crazy to me. And so we wish we could find them for that. But when you call the regular number to report something that is of concern, but it's static. In other words, it's not going up or down. People are allowed with music. Cars may be racing up and down. And maybe an argument that's starting up. Those kind of things are a great time to call the regular number. When you see the issue needs immediate response, we have a three-minute and 20-second average response to emergencies, which is, again, one of the fastest you're going to find anywhere. It's not always three minutes and 20 seconds, but when you know we need to be there and there's a fight starting or something, and arguments beginning to increase in its loudness and the aggressions, please do call 911. If a crime is occurring or is about to occur, or you believe that one occurred, 911 is important for us, especially with a burglary type of crime, robbery, violence. Those type of events require 911.
So, council member? Well, we have a couple more, but do you want to move on to the...
Yeah, we probably do. Is there a way to combine the questions into... Because I think some are, some of the response time we talked about, and then speeding vehicles on Washington and Allen. Send someone out there, Chief.
Give me the street name again, Allen and...
Washington and Allen. I think it's along Washington. There's a lot of sort of drag racing.
There is. And we're seeing that all over the city.
And DOT.
Yeah. So DOT could talk to it. But for the police, we are putting our traffic officers where they need to be. And we're putting our police officers in the cars out there as well. During COVID, there have been less cars. When I last checked, they told me a million cars come from Pasadena daily, which is a high number, in my view. Lately, or the last year, that hasn't been the case. That gives people an excuse to speed from one stoplight to another, which makes no sense to me either. And so that's created the loud noise of engines late night. A lot of people have anything other to do than race around town. And so we try to catch what we can, but it is very difficult for us to follow the noise and try to capture them.
Council member, I think that question was about the response time. The constituent is asking for a non-emergency. So Chief, Chief Perez, how long would it take you guys to respond to a non-emergency on like the regular number?
It, well, even if you call 911 with a regular number, the emergency will dictate our response. So it doesn't matter which one you call. So I don't want, you call 744-4241, you're going to get a longer response. But if it's not an emergency where people, where life is threatened and aggression is high, then we're looking at anywhere from a five, six-minute response. If it's what we would call a cold report, or it's going to be a report call, it may be up to 15, 20 minutes or longer, depending on what's happening. So those get a little bit more dicey in trying to respond to those longer calls. But what we don't want people to do is call and say things that are not happening and get a quicker response. There is a law. There are things you get yourself in big trouble to do that. So please be honest and ethical in your reporting, and we promise to do the best that we can as well. There are times people call and say, hey, you guys never came out. And we look at those calls to see what happened. Oftentimes, people miss the officers coming by, driving by, or looking around a general area. If you report a theft of something out in front of your house, chances are, we're going to be driving the area looking for a potential suspect instead of just driving straight to your house. So that might cause a response times as well.
Okay. And so we're going to move to the next speaker. We have some questions in Q and A, but if Darla can sort of take a stab at answering some of those, or if you can see them as well, Chief, and you want to answer any of them, we will follow up with people with the answers. Because I know the chief has to leave a little bit later. So next we will...
I will answer one with just one only.
Oh, do you want to give one of those?
This has been a big deal, and that is the issue with gangs, if you don't mind, boss. You know, it's got a lot of attention regionally about the chief not really having a brain about getting rid of the gang unit, not thinking it out, because we had, like I said, a 58% increase in people shot, 85% in gang violence. It's very, very important for people to know, we didn't give up our fight to reduce gang violence by visibility and intervention. That's what comes first. We're in a place where enforcement is needed. We are doing intelligence-led, using science to our advantage to identify the people that we know are probably involved or are involved or other people that are active gang members. We are trying to stop people that we know are involved in this type of activity and keep grabbing the guns and doing this work. We're not getting a gun a night by accident. So eliminating the gang unit, what we did was eliminate decades of work, which worked just fine, but it caused a lot of trauma in our neighborhoods. We stopped. We have 100% Latino and Black gangs. 100%. We can't work Asian gangs or white gangs because we don't have those gangs in our city. We have no reports or history or intelligence to show us that. So we get very uncomfortable when we start talking about race and policing and the socioeconomic factor of it all. And so we're using an approach to really eliminate the years passed of just stopping people in neighborhoods and asking them, hey, are you a gang member? I grew up in one of those neighborhoods, and it's not, it's not good to grow up every day wondering if you're going to get stopped or not. So we've stopped that type of policing for the most part. And we're focusing on the science, on the intelligence-led, and getting to the guns and trying to stop this violence the best that we can. At the end of the day, I am responsible for everything that's going on. But we have an approach with the Neighborhood Services Section, the bike patrols, and everything else that we're doing as one big giant strategy that is based on science, better for our community, healthier. But at the end of the day, we're still engaging people with guns on their waistbands, and they're holding on to them. So I'll end it with that, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. And if there are a couple of questions in there, if you want to email Darla, we could follow up with the chief, and we can send back answers. I think they're about the helicopter and then the border with El Didita. So thank you so much, Chief, and then we will turn it over to City Manager Steve Romell.
Hi. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me. I see some familiar names in the attendance list, so hi to those folks I know. Just want to provide a few updates for you and then try to respond for some questions. I can hang out to the bitter end and respond. So obviously, our biggest challenge this past year has been maintaining city services during the COVID pandemic. It's been a challenge. We've had probably more than 150 employees themselves contract COVID, and we've had to quarantine about 400 others. We were even utilizing trailers up around the Rose Bowl to quarantine fire and police and some public works people who didn't want to go home and risk infecting their families. So it's been difficult. I can't say that it's been seamless. I recognize there has been some challenges with some areas of service in the city. But for the most part, the trash still gets picked up, and code enforcement is doing their job. And so I'm hopeful that all of you didn't experience a degradation of city services during this time. Obviously, most attention is on getting vaccines rolled out. We're thankful to have our own health department. We have our own fabulous health director, Dr. Ying Ying Go, and her team are doing a wonderful job. I think probably some of you on the call today have gone through our medical point of distribution at PCC. PCC has been so great to let us use their parking structure. We can put 1,200 to 1,400 people through there in a day. And our biggest challenge has simply been getting enough vaccine from the state. I'm happy to report that this week, we got our first shipment of Johnson &amp; Johnson. And so we're using that in addition to what we're getting to continue our vaccinations. In fact, as of today, 38,408 Pasadena residents have received at least one dose of the vaccine. So that's pretty good. And our health department has administered 15,000 of those doses. So we're doing well, and we're hopeful that over the next, of the course of the next couple of months, we can get to everybody. We're in Tier 1B now, but more tiers will be opening up. We also expect, because of Southern California as a whole is moving forward at a good clip and hitting the social equity targets on vaccine distribution, we're likely to move into the red tier of the four color-coded tiers that the state has established. We never got out of the purple tier for a year, but now we're finally on the verge of moving into the red tier, which will allow the reopening of some things that have been closed. Specifically, restaurants should be allowed to reopen for indoor dining at 25% capacity. Movie theaters also at 25%. Yoga studios, 10%. And look, candidly, some of that might not be viable. It might not be viable for a yoga business to open at 10%. But the fact that we're moving forward into the tiers is a positive sign. Locally, we plan to take advantage of whatever the governor will allow us to do. So if we are in the red tier and we can open the restaurants, we will. I don't see us holding back. I know there's been some... I know there's been some discussion in LA County about possibly doing that. Uh, our budget has been a big concern for me, we've lost in excess of thirty million dollars. As a result of the recession associated with COVID, and we've spent probably twenty million dollars in our COVID response. That M pod down at PCC, that is expensive to operate that, but we've been doing it because we need to get the vaccines out to our community. I was very thankful earlier today, when I heard that Congress had passed the president's COVID relief bill. Uh, and we expect him to sign it on Friday. On Monday, at the city council meeting, which will be at a new time, four thirty PM, and from there on, council meetings will be at four thirty. We will have a little update on what's in that COVID relief. Uh, we are, we are expecting significant relief back to the city of Pasadena, which will allow us to replenish our reserves. We burned through all of our unallocated fund balance, or if you will, the cash in our checking account. It's a little over thirteen million dollars. We also erased five percent of our twenty percent reserve. We've been spending money quickly, trying to manage through the pandemic, doing things like standing up. Uh, a a remote treatment facility at the convention center, because early on, we had these horrible fears that we would end up like New York. Where people are dying because they can't get medical care, and thank goodness, none of that ever came to pass. But we outlaid an awful lot of money just in case. And then, as the chief mentioned, on the community violence issue, it's very troubling, literally every day. Our police are are taking guns out of our community. In addition to the steps that the chief outlined, we brought on some individuals to do intervention directly with the gang members and the gangs. And the shock collars to try to prevent the shootings in the first place, but also to try to stop the reprisals. These gangs aren't just in Pasadena, they're really across the San Gabriel Valley. If someone gets shot in Duarte, oftentimes, there's repercussions here. If someone is shot in the inland empire, there's repercussions here. They move across the city boundaries and into the county area, and so it's a regional issue. Earlier in the week, we were talking to county supervisor Barger's office about a more regional approach to the violence. So we're getting attention with what we're doing here in Pasadena, and the cities of Duarte and Monrovia and the county are following along. So let me stop there, Darla, let me know if you want me to answer some questions, and I'll certainly hang around to the bitter end.
Okay, yeah, so first is uh just a note of thanks from Doug, he just wants to thank PPHD, Pasadena. Public Health Department and all involved in setting up and running the COVID vex vaccination site at PCC. Very thankful, and then a combination uh question regarding the vaccine. Are you planning to have a fifty five to sixty five year old vaccine tier soon? Um, how is Pasadena doing reaching our underserved minority groups with the vaccine effort? And um a concern about people jumping up, jumping the line and trying to get COVID vaccines before their turn.
Sure, let me hit all those, so we follow the state guidelines on which which phase we're in in terms of the tiers. So as soon as the governor says we're into the new tier, we'll be supporting that. In terms of meeting our sort of hard to reach uh communities, we worked with Huntington Hospital and the. Uh, NAACP to support clinics at their facility. We worked with the National Day Labor Association to get a vaccine clinics through through that association. We're thankful for the Johnson and Johnson, because that's gonna allow us to get to some of our harder to reach populations. Homeless populations, people who you worry may not be able to come back for a second shot. I know for a fact, we've literally been going to some people's homes and providing them vaccine. The great thing about having our own health department is how accessible it is uh to our community. And then in terms of people jumping the lines, it got tremendous press this week, I think we all saw. What happens when you register with us and say that uh you meet one of the criteria, you're in the in the tier and you're ready for your vaccine? Then when we can offer it to you, we send you a link, and we tell you, don't share this link with anybody, well, someone did. And it went to people in the entertainment and news media, and thankfully, someone had a conscience. And they called our public information officer Lisa Bedarian, and they asked her, is this legit, should I be using this? And and she said, no, it's not, you shouldn't be using it. So we canceled out our pod, but then we had all those people that were scheduled, so out of about twelve hundred people, maybe six, seven hundred shouldn't have done it. But several hundred needed it, so our health department went about calling people. And arranging for them to come to the health department to get their, in this case, it's pretty much all second doses we're doing, so. We don't wanna leave our people in the lurch, just because some bad actors are trying to jump the line. It's a challenge with the state system, because you can't exclude it, say, for certain zip codes. Or uh exclude people that aren't yet in the tier, that's been one of the criticisms of the statewide database workforce to you.
Okay, um, I have a couple that were submitted by email. Um, the city of Los Angeles recently adopted a pre-approved standard plans for ADUs or granny flats to expedite the permit process. Would Pasadena consider adopting such a program?
Yes, we're doing the same, we got a grant recently, we're working up some standard plans. Uh, we probably have over a hundred applications for ADUs, and so we're moving forward in the same direction.
Okay, um, I would like to know how many employees are in the entire Pasadena workforce? Of that number, how many actually live in Pasadena, and what would be the reasons that they live out of the area?
Sure, so we have a little over two thousand employees, if you count our part time workers. If we factored out part time workers, it's probably about seventeen hundred permanent full time employees. Of the total workforce, about twenty five percent live in the city. If we went back thirty years when I started, the number would be higher. The fact of the matter is, high housing costs uh is one reason why people live a little bit further, but also people make lifestyle choices. People that are married oftentimes their spouse works, and living in Pasadena may not be, you know, geographically uh good. It'd be good for one member of the household, maybe not for the other, and people are living where they live for all sorts of reasons, maybe they. We have a lot of our younger employees live in downtown LA, and they come up the Gold Line, maybe some others wanna be a little more suburban. Uh, I, full disclosure, I don't live in the city of Pasadena, I spend lots and lots of hours in the city of Pasadena. But then I don't wanna get recognized when I'm in the grocery store. There's a lot of other city managers from neighboring cities that live in Pasadena, because they don't wanna get recognized in the grocery store in the cities that they work.
Okay, um, can I ask how Pasadena is going to spend the seven ten closure monies? Will planning and design consultants be hired by RFP, or will planning and design be accomplished existing on call contracts?
Well, we haven't actually received any money for the seven ten. Uh, Metro has allotted some money from a budgetary standpoint for a possible grade separation for the Gold Line. But it's only about half the money necessary to do that project. In terms of the seven ten stub, you know, we're working with Caltrans to try to get a relinquishment. Whereby they would provide the property back to the city. The key to that relinquishment is working out the interconnection between the state highway system and our local streets. We're hopeful that by the end of this calendar year, they will relinquish the property to the city. And then we can begin a community planning process for how to re-envision and reintegrate the stub into our community.
Great, thank you, so I I think that was it in the um Q and A box for the city manager, but he will stick around for other questions. And um just wanna do a quick introduction of our new fire chief, Chad Augustine, so wanted to say hello and let us know what's happening in our district.
Excellent, good evening, and first I'd like to just uh thank council member Williams and Darla for the invite here. I am in week three um as your new fire chief, and I could not be more excited. It's been uh this first three weeks have been quite the whirlwind, but uh I'm I'm just, I could, I'm so honored to be here. Um, and look forward to working with and for each of you. My uh priorities as your new fire chief are uh in the long term disaster preparation and community partnerships. So that we can make our community safer, and then also continuing on the excellent service delivery. Uh, that Pasadena Fire Department currently provides. In the short term, we have some immediate needs of filling vacancies, so that we ensure that we have um adequately staffed fire stations. Which leads us right into the Jefferson Elementary conversation. Um, we have a need to start a new fire academy, um, it's tentatively scheduled to start April twelfth. And it'll be the largest fire recruit academy in the history of the fire department. Um, and it, the uh city of Pasadena does not have a a large training center. We frequently use Fire Station thirty three on Lake uh Avenue uh as our training center, and then partner with some of our regional. Uh, partners, uh Glendale Fire Department went for some of their facilities. Station thirty three is currently under renovation uh and and a large remodel. And so it has prevented us from being able to use that facility as um for our recruit academy. The station is still staffed twenty four seven for any emergency needs, and our fire personnel are temporarily relocated in portable trailers on that ground. Uh, the the goal of Jefferson Elementary, when we worked with our community partners. And finding that uh that location, it was centrally located. It allows us kind of all the the needs that we have for training uh future firefighters. Um, from uh classrooms uh so that they can be well educated, and then also a large enough space for training grounds. Our personnel will be there Monday through Thursday and occasionally some Fridays. Um, and typical timeframes would be like a five AM to five PM. Um, we would be very respectful of that five AM uh early morning time of keeping the noise down. Um, so that uh we're not uh causing any any issues in the neighborhood. Um, and we will have twenty recruits, uh as well as six um training staff cadre. That will be there training with them, and then an occasional fire engine or ladder truck coming through um to assist with those training needs. Uh, like I said, the the academy is scheduled to start April twelfth. We would have people there slightly before that, probably the first week of April, and it's scheduled to go um around twenty weeks. And and sometime around the first of September. I'll pause there just to answer any questions uh in case I didn't uh in case I missed anything.
Um, one question that came in is uh asking if you are looking for more recruits for this class, or is it full?
We we are uh currently in that we've given conditional uh offers of employment after a rigorous. Uh, recruitment process, and we have uh multiple members that are currently in backgrounds. Going through the background and all the the pre-hire process, and then right behind that. We will start our preparation for our next academy, um which I would like to do in twenty twenty two. Um, and that way, we're addressing the the current and projected vacancy needs.
Okay, great, I don't see any other fire questions, but um for those of you, Jefferson Park is located on Villa around Sierra Bonita. Uh, near the freeway, so anyone in that neighborhood, if you have concerns or questions, please feel free to contact the council office, and we can. Uh, then contact the fire department and and address the issue. So thank you so much for being here, welcome after three weeks, your first town hall, right?
Thank you so much, and um I'll stay on uh just in case there's any questions for the Q and A at the end.
Okay, great, so now we will turn it over to Department of Transportation, I believe they have a presentation to do, so we'll we'll get that teed up. Uh, but this is Laura Cunejo, who is the uh sort of new director of DOT. I can still say that maybe, and then Rich DeLuio as well, who works on a lot of projects uh in our district and the area, so go for it.
Hey, thank you, good evening, I just wanna check, am I good to show my screen?
Let me try it.
Here we go, okay, let's see if this works, can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome, okay, well, thank you for inviting me. Um, joining me this evening is Rich DeLuio, he's a principal planner with the Department of Transportation. I am going to go through the first couple slides, there's a lot happening, citywide, a lot happening within your district. And so rather than me talking the entire time, I'm gonna go through the first couple slides where I talk about the citywide efforts we have underway. And then I'm gonna invite Rich to talk about the specific district two projects that I'm sure you're all excited to learn more about. So to get started, I wanna talk a little bit about our Pasadena transit system, because through COVID. We have continued to operate and provide service, recognizing that a lot of our passengers and customers are essential workers. And so we've done a lot to make sure that we continue to provide safe transportation. And that our transit system continues to be safe, not just for our customers, but also for our bus operators. Um, some of the things that we've implemented over time is enhanced cleaning protocols. Throughout the day, our operators wipe down high touch points, we have a hand sanitizing station in the back of all of our buses. Um, we carry whenever we have available disposable masks. So if a passenger tries to board and they do not have a mask, we offer them a mask, because you are required to wear a mask onboard our buses. Um, and we've also want to make sure that our customers can socially distance. So to make sure that that happens, we have select seats that are blocked off. We also have been limiting our boarding, and because of that, we have continually kind of taken a look at our operations. We add more buses where we need to, where there's a lot of demand, we keep seeing ridership go up, which is normally good. Except in times like this, when we need to make sure people can socially distance. So you will see in the coming weeks, if you haven't already onboard our buses, that image um to where there's a circle. There is a barrier that is also an additional protection for both our operators and our customers. At some point, we will transition from rear door boarding to boarding back at the front of the bus, and so we wanna make sure. That as you do that, we want you to be able to greet our bus operators, we want them to greet you and welcome you onboard, but we wanna keep you safe, so there's now that additional barrier there. Moving on to our parking program, um lots going on there as well over the summer and this fall. We completed the implementation of our parking access and revenue control system. That is a very long and fancy way of saying that those gates that let you in and out of our parking. And the brain that controls those gates are new, and they are the state of the art technology. So if you ever experienced entering one of our garages and just had a little bit of trouble getting out, either your ticket wasn't being read, that arm gate wasn't going up. That shouldn't be an issue, if it is, please let us know, the system is new and again, state of the art, so you should be able to get in and out without a problem. We are also looking at a number, have a number of kind of long term plans that are in the works. Um, we have a parking strategic plan that is really intended to help us look at the overall parking program. Through the strategic plan, we're looking at a number of things, we are looking at our policies, we're looking at the parking related municipal code, make sure it's up to date. We are looking at how we can better serve you, um our customers, make sure that there is parking available when you need it. We are looking at how we can make sure that um we are supporting our businesses, making sure we're bringing in customers, providing parking for for you as customers to be able to come in. And shop at their businesses. Um, part of that is looking at our fee structure and how we can better make sure that we're both providing you a service. Making sure that we have turnover in our spaces for those businesses that need customers to come in and out. Um, we are also making sure that we are in a position to be able to reinvest in our garages. There's a lot that we'd like to do to be able to make those garages more welcoming, improve the technology. Um, be more creative with the spaces within our garages, and not just have them be for vehicles that are parking. But looking at how we can um provide more, have our garages be more of a kind of multimodal facility, and so the strategic plan is looking at all of that. We had a round of meetings in the fall, and we will be having more meetings in the summer. Where uh we have been working with our business improvement districts, and then come the summer, we will be going up back out and asking for your input. Um, we will have surveys, we will have stakeholder meetings, and so please keep an eye out for that. Um, along those lines, we are developing a garage assessment to let us know exactly what the needs are of those garages. Along those lines, we are developing a garage assessment to let us know exactly what the needs are of those garages, what we need to do to maintain them, what we need to do to bring them, you know, make them state of the art. And that'll let us know kind of what that financial commitment could be and it'll help us lay out a plan to do that. You have also noticed that a lot of our curbside parking has been converted for on-street dining and for parklets. And this is one of those COVID programs that we implemented in order to be able to support our businesses. When sit-down dining, indoor dining has not been available, we recognize that our restaurants needed to be able to thrive and have some kind of ability for the customers to sit down and grab a meal. And we wanted to be able to support them. So as of now, we have, I want to say three parklets. I believe one might not be in existence anymore, but last I checked, there were three parklets and we have about 17 street segments that have on-street dining. About a month ago, your city council approved purchasing the the barricades that provide some protection for the on-street diners. And what that means is that we can now keep this program a little bit longer, as long as restaurants see that it's benefiting them, as long as we're asked to provide it and we think that customers are enjoying having on-street dining, we will be able to keep that program in place. Another program that came to be in response to COVID is a slow streets program. This is one where, you know, everyone was stuck at home. We saw more people riding bikes, people walking, and we wanted to be able to provide them with safer streets to do that. And so we launched the Slow Streets Program. We continue to have this program. We're looking at keeping this program longer term, but we need your help in order to make sure that it's working, that it's successful. What the program does is it really targets those local residential streets. And we have those signs that we provide. And it's meant to be a physical obstruction for vehicles, just kind of at the entrance of those local residential streets to remind drivers that they need to slow down, that their neighbors might very well be out walking and bicycling. And you know, we've received a lot of great input, but if you are interested in nominating your street and working with the Department of Transportation, please go to that website, sign up and we will follow up and make sure that this program gets implemented in your local residential street. The last item citywide that I'll talk about before I hand it over to Rich is a traffic investigation that we carry out. Traffic investigations are intended to look at any concerns that you might have about parking. If you think you need a traffic stop, if you a stop sign, if you have concerns about speeding, please contact us through the Citizen Service Center. We will take a look at your concern. Typically, it takes about anywhere from six to eight weeks, depending on the complexity of of the issue that you're asking us to look at. We always circle back and let you know what the results are of that traffic investigation and any recommendations that come from that investigation. But again, if there's anything of concern, please reach out to us through the Citizen Service Center. And with that, I'm going to invite Rich DeLuio to talk about District Two specific projects that his team or that he oversees with the help of his team.
Thank you, Laura, and good evening to everybody. The first project I'm going to talk about is the North Hill Avenue Complete Streets Project. In 2016, the department began the program. We put together an advisory committee of volunteer residents, which we assembled to work with a consultant to develop traffic calming measures along the corridor. In March of 2017, the proposed improvements were presented to the residents of North Hill Avenue and were met with strong support. You may have noticed that striping changes have since been made along North Hill between the 210 Freeway and Washington Boulevard to help change driver behavior and calm traffic on the roadway. The design has begun on two traffic circles at the intersections of Hill Avenue in Topeka and Hill Avenue in Elizabeth Street. Public outreach obtained residents' comments on the design and the look of those traffic circles will be virtually performed and it will be done at the 60 and 90% design. And we've just started that process, so we're looking for that to start probably sometime this summer where you'll be able to comment on the design. We'll put them on. There'll be some conceptual versions up there and people will be able to comment on the design. There was a question that we had gotten that I'll address real quick about possible traffic diversion. And one of the reasons that we chose and the residents chose the traffic circles are, is that these are what I'll call real traffic circles. For those of you that know the traffic circles on Glen Arm, those have stop signs. These will not have stop signs. These are the true traffic circles. So they work to calm traffic, but they will not divert traffic somewhere. There will be no backup. It'll just change driver behavior. It slows them down, brings them down to the posted speed limit. It actually makes folks coming off of Topeka and Elizabeth to be able to get onto Hill Avenue a lot safer and it's going to be a lot safer for pedestrians because of the crosswalks. This is one of the conceptual drawings that was done that we shared with the advisory committee at the time. So that's all that these will do. They'll just change driver behavior. They're not going to divert traffic onto other streets. That would, that's not something that we would do. But we do want to make it a more livable street for the folks that are on Hill Avenue. Next slide. So the next project was a Complete Streets Project and that's the Mountain Street at Sierra Bonita and Sinaloa. And basically it was the block of Mount between Allen and Hill. And the residents came to us and we formed a working group to deal with some of their concerns at the time. And through this process, we looked at a number of enhancements we could make. Currently, there is a, at the intersection of Sierra Bonita and Mountain, there was already a four-way stop. But what the residents wanted was just, if you know that street, it's a very wide portion of of Mountain between Allen and Hill. So we did a temporary painting of center medians. And this process, we're going to design a permanent center medians at those locations. And it basically just chokes down the intersection a little bit, so it calms traffic at the intersection. Secondly, the intersection of Mountain and Sinaloa will actually have a traffic circle. And I think actually, or excuse me, I have that, I have that, no, Sinaloa is going to be the one that's going to have the a traffic circle anyways. The the design here has the wrong street. I'm sorry, but the traffic circle is going to be at Mountain in Sinaloa. And it will look like this. I think this is just has disnamed wrong on the the picture. But this will have a traffic circle like the one that we're designing for Hill and Topeka where there will not be stop signs, just the traffic circle, but we will be incorporating some bulbouts. It will calm the intersection and it will make it a lot easier for the pedestrians on the street to to cross at these areas. A lot of folks in the neighborhood walk along this street in this neighborhood. And this all came about by, you know, all that resident input and hard work that they put in to help us decide what's the best approach for traffic calming in their neighborhood. So we're designing this for a future installation. Next slide. And the next one is the Allen Gold Line Station or now the L Line Station Safety Enhancement. The Department of Transportation, we received a $500,000 grant from the Southern California Association of Governments or known as SCAG for what they call a quick build pilot infrastructure project, which will provide opportunities for us to test different types of what we call safety infrastructure. Those could be curb extensions, high visibility crosswalks, scrambled crosswalks, things of that nature. And we'll be able to engage the local community and collect and evaluate the feedback of what they think about these pilot projects. And what that does is it gives us the opportunity to really test these things out and then decide which one of these may be something we want to move on on a more permanent basis. And these have been done throughout the county and other areas. And it's another, you know, opportunity to bring the public in, in the residents and to decide what they feel is best. You know, for their community. It's not just DOT deciding what's best. So it's really, you know, gives folks an, you know, opportunity to see what different things are available that are out there on a temporary basis, but can also be permanently if they choose to be and and we can achieve the funding. And the next project is the Northlake Traffic Pedestrian Safety Enhancement Plan. And and this is currently going on and DOT is conducting a safety enhancement corridor study for Northlake Avenue from Mountain Street down to Maple where the the Gold Line L Line Station is located. Through the project, we aim to improve pedestrian traffic safety along the corridor that links the downtown to the station with the neighborhoods north of the freeway. Through this, a concept design with a cost instant estimation will be developed for feasible improvements supported by the community. Currently, we just finished our 30% design comment period. It's all done virtual. We will begin the 60%, hopefully by the end of this month, will be online for folks to make comments on on our website and the project will be 100% completed by June 30th of this year. So we we would, I would promote our website again, which is cityofpassadena.net forward slash transportation where you can find all of these projects I'm talking about. And you click on them and this this program in particular, we're very proud of the virtue. We're getting a lot better. Our consultants are getting a lot better at this virtual outreach and I think you'd be very impressed by the work that they've done on this one. And lastly, is a future project that will be going on. Hopefully, the beginning of the next fiscal year, which will be sometime this this summer. And it is a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program or what we call NTMP for short, for the Mountain Street, Holliston Avenue area. So you you kind of take that intersection, but it's really that whole area right there, basically a mountain between Hill and Mentor Lake Street. And we're going to look at that corridor to, you know, give it a comprehensive process for managing traffic volumes, travel speeds, traffic-related noise, you know, in the residential neighborhood. And what we usually do is we would bring on an advisory group of volunteers. We may not be able to do that quite yet, so we'll probably be doing this on a virtual basis, which still makes everybody, you know, everyone's accessible to that. They can comment on it. And we'll have different types of ideas. People can let us know what they like, what they don't like. But what, it really depends on the residents' participation. That's the key to this. We can offer different types of, you know, enhancements or improvements, but we really like to know what the residents want to see in their neighborhood and on their street. You know, every neighborhood is a little different. Everybody may have a different approach to their their corridor, their street, but you know, that's the process. We want to make sure that residents are involved in in the process because they're also the ones that are going to live on the streets. Whatever enhancements we do for traffic calming is something that they're going to live with on a daily basis also. So it's really important that the the neighbors in this community be involved in this process. And as soon as we get started with that, we obviously contact everyone, especially virtually now, to let them know of the process and how to be part of it. So for the folks that live in that neighborhood, this will be starting sometime probably midsummer, early fall. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm sure Laura and I will be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Rich. So thank you for bringing up the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program there. We have a couple of questions in the chat about speeding specifically on Casa Grande. We heard the one earlier about Hill and Washington. And then another one on Topeka for speeding and they put the slow street signs on Topeka, which seem to have been working. But generally, if if neighbors have noticed speeding and have concerns about that, what is the best way to address that? Is it to do a traffic investigation? Is it the NTMP? What is, what's the best way?
Absolutely. The best thing for them to do, council member, is have them, you know, reach out to us through the the Citizen Service Center, let us know what the concern is, the location. We open up a traffic investigation and then we take it from there. For those locations mentioned tonight, we can go ahead and jot those down and we'll go ahead and enter those into our system.
Great. Anything else, Rich?
No, I was going to say that Laura was spot on. That's the first step that we really like to take. And we and we really like the folks to use the the Citizen Service Center because it helps us track things and it keeps us on our toes and make sure things get done on time. And it also gives us the contact that we need with the resident. We have their information so we can get back to them with their concern and with what, you know, different things that we may be able to do to help solve the issue. So that that's why it works really well for us too.
A couple of questions regarding parking permits. One person tried to purchase a temporary one-night parking permit and from the website and was told they need to go get it from a kiosk. And also RV, well, when will RV parking passes be available online?
You know, transitioning, we're in the process of making as much available online as we can. So I don't have a timing for the RV permits, but that's, you know, if you look up on our website, we have something like 20 different types of permits and we're in the process of transitioning all those, but we'll certainly circle back once we have a better timing on the RV permits.
Let's see, will will parking be allowed between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM like it was before, like during the pandemic? Will that be reinstated? Or are we sticking with the no parking between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM?
The city has overnight parking restrictions and there are a few exceptions in certain areas. Right now, we are enforcing our parking policies similar to pre-COVID standards. So if there is a parking restriction in this area between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, we are enforcing that.
Can the Allen, oh, where'd it go? There was something about the Allen Station. Can it be cleaned more often, the Allen Gold Line Station?
So we can definitely work with our sister agencies. And within the city, there's this odd relationship at all of our metro stations where depending on the location, either the city's responsible, Metro or Caltrans is responsible, but I will definitely reach out to both our sister agencies as well as internally within the city family to make sure that we're maintaining that station.
Okay. Is there an update on the cycle track for Union Street?
Rich, do you want to take that or you want me to take that one?
It's up to you. I can take it. We're actually, we're in the process right now. We have 100% design and we're going to, we're giving it one final once-over and we are going to submit those to Caltrans for their approval. We have to get their approval. So once we have the Caltrans approval, which does take Caltrans time, as we call it, so that could be, could be a few months. But once we get our E71, then we can move forward with moving forward with bidding it out for for construction. We just have to make sure all the t's are crossed and the i's are dotted. And so hopefully by the end of this year, we will be looking to put an RFP out for the the construction of the project itself.
Is the Orange Grove Boulevard calming project, which was stopped by the neighborhood two years ago, a dead issue?
The short answer is yes. That project is no longer identified. That project is no longer identified in our capital improvements project list. What we are doing, however, along Orange Grove is we are looking at key locations where we can make it safer for pedestrians. And so that is how we're approaching it. Really kind of making sure that we're making it safer for pedestrians, looking at pedestrian crossings. And that's our approach for now.
And to piggyback on that, Laura, we did get some questions about the traffic signals proposed for Craig and Sunny Slope along Orange Grove to kind of help with the traffic. But there were concerns of that, that they weren't funded in the capital improvement plan. So any ideas there or any timing?
Yeah, I'm trying to think, Craig and Sunny Slope. And that is identified. I have to go back and double-check if they're fully funded yet or not.
I think they were delayed in the current CIP just because of the budget situation. But if we could find other funds for that, that would be great.
We have a handful of locations where they're identified within our capital improvement projects. And, you know, now it's a matter of securing grant funding, making sure we have the funding available to be able to implement them. And the good thing is, though, that it is within our CIP. So it's, it's identified as a priority project.
I guess the, the answer before about overnight parking permit, they wanted some clarity as to if they can purchase and print out a parking permit online, or do they need to go to a kiosk?
They should be able to print one online. A lot of our parking permits, again, we're trying to go virtual and online. So they, they should be able to do that online.
Any thought to using Sarabina instead of Allen to enhance the walkability between the Allen Station and Colorado Boulevard?
Rich, do you want to speak to that?
Actually, Sarabina is what we, is on, is in our bike plan, actually, is one of our Greenway Streets. And we're putting, we put together a study to actually look at what improvements are feasible that we could actually do along all four of our Greenway Streets, Sarabina being one of those. So it is, in the future, it is, you know, and part of our plan in the CIP is to, is to prioritize these corridors. Sarabina being one of them. The other ones happen to be El Malino, Wilson, and Craig. And once we get those priorities set, we are going to go out and try to get funding to do these improvements along, or what we call our Greenways. And the Greenways are not just for cyclists. They're really just making them more livable streets. So the, the improvements that we'd be doing on these streets would be beneficial for both cyclists and pedestrians, most of it being traffic calming measures. So yes, Sunny Slope is a goal of ours in the future to absolutely do that, for all four of those, actually.
How does one request or, or suggest a permit parking only, specifically on Mentor, from Bell to Washington, to reduce crime and nuisances?
I missed the first part. Can you repeat the first part?
Sure, yeah. Residents interested in trying to get permit parking only on their street during, during business hours to reduce crime and nuisances, specifically on Mentor?
Sure, same thing. Have them submit the request through the Citizen Service Center, and we will open up the traffic investigation for that and, and determine the feasibility of, of such a program.
Okay. Last question, any chance to get Villa repaved? That's where bike lanes are located, and it's pretty messed up.
Yeah, you know, repaving of the streets, we would need to reach out to our Public Works Department and make sure, find out where it is on their schedule. I'm happy to do that. And then circle back, darling, give you the timing for that.
Okay, so I think there are other DOT questions, but a lot of them are very specific about specific intersections. And what we'll do is we'll download that and then, and I really encourage anyone who's asking questions about specific intersections, areas that need paving or reflectors, please take a picture, submit it through the Citizen Service app or email it to us so that we can see what it looks like, and we can then direct it to the right department, which it's Public Works for paving or DOT, whichever department it is. So we'll open it up for general questions. We have just a couple of minutes more. Thank you so, you guys so much for hanging in there. I mean, this is, we kind of kept everybody. We only had a few people go over to the other webinar. So any other general questions while we have the city manager, the fire chief, or DOT here? Any other general questions? We'll take about one or two more questions. Do you see anything, Darla?
A lot of people thanking you and everybody for being, for being a panelist and, and answering questions. We have one more, Department of Transportation. Why is the North Lake Plan not centered around the Gold Line Station like the Allen Improvement Plan?
So, Rich, why don't you speak to this one? A lot of it is really, you know, it does connect to the, the station. But it's really kind of, if you take the entire corridor as a whole, there's a lot of work that we're doing, starting even from South Lake at the intersections at the Lake Avenue Station, and then North Lake. So, Rich, maybe you can speak to a little bit about the North Lake segment.
Could, could you, I'm sorry, Darla, can you repeat the specific question for me again?
I will try to find it.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. I think it had to do with, hang on, looking for it. Hang on. Why is the North Lake Plan not centered around the Gold Line Station like the Allen Improvement Plan?
Yes, but basically, it, the, the idea of this, at the time, the request actually came from our current mayor, who is the former council member of, of the area, Mayor Gordo, to, to look at safety enhancements for folks getting to the station. I know that there is, the Public Works has a plan to make improvements at the station or enhancements at the station itself. But this really is a corridor project to make it, you know, safer for folks to actually get to the station. But Public Works really deals specifically, works with Metro for the improvements at the station itself. This is more a corridor project, similar to the corridor project that was, that's already been in the works down on South Lake to get folks up to, up to the station. You know, the station itself, as Laura mentioned, you know, there's a lot, a lot of different groups involved in the station itself, being Metro being the, the key there. But the, the North Lake Project is really basically from Maple, the street right above it, up to Mountain, you know, making that corridor safer and more enhanced. So it's, it's not that we're leaving it out. It just, it was not the, the focus of, of the project itself.
Okay, so I, I think, so I think that's all the questions that we are going to take. We didn't see any additional ones for the fire chief or the city manager. But what we will do is we'll download the Q and A and provide answers. There were a lot of questions about using the Passport app to pay for overnight parking and, and other questions like that. So we'll get back to those questions. We'll work on those separately. We are hoping to have our next town hall meeting in June. And so we don't know if that's going to be hybrid or virtual. We don't know about these times. But if there are topics that you are interested in or department heads that you would like to see here, then please let us know, and we'll probably, please sign up for the newsletter. And we'll probably have a little poll in there to see what topics people want to hear about at the next town hall meeting. But I do anticipate doing this every about three or four months, so we can check in with everybody and, and try to answer a lot of questions. So I think with that, we'll thank all of our panelists. We don't have the police chief with us, but thank you, Chief Perez. Thank you, IT, for running a beautiful webinar. We also have, he was sort of in the background. We have Anthony Ricatello, who is our high school intern in our office, who is helping us with things in District Two. So thank you to everybody. Please be safe. If you have questions about the vaccine and getting the vaccine, please send those to us as we open up more tiers for people to get vaccinated. We hope to see everybody soon. We hope everybody is safe. Reach out if you need assistance, if you have questions. And everybody, take care. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Bye-bye.